Good morning. My name is Bruce Hamilton, and I am the Chairman of the Defense Nuclear Facilities Safety Board. I will preside over this morning's public hearing. I now call this hearing into order. I would like to introduce my colleagues on the board. To my left is Board Member Daniel Santos. To my immediate right is Board Member Joyce Connery. Two seats to my right is Board Member Jesse Roberson. We four constitute the board. The Board's Acting General Counsel, Mr. Joseph Gilman, is seated to my far right. Several leaders and members of the board's staff who are closely involved with oversight of the Department of Energy's defense nuclear facilities are also here. This hearing is the second of three public hearings planned by the board to gather information regarding the objectives and implementation of Department of Energy Order 140.1 interface with the Defense Nuclear Facilities Safety Board. Specifically, we will obtain information on the board's access to information, facilities, and personnel, and on potential impacts to the board's resident inspector program. The first hearing was held here on August 28, 2018, and the third hearing will be held in New Mexico sometime in February. The board's enabling legislation contained within the Atomic Energy Act as amended defines this agency's authorities, responsibilities, functions, and organizational structure. The enabling legislation assigns responsibilities to the Secretary of Energy in his or her role as the owner and regulator of the department's complex of sites and facilities regarding cooperation with the board and providing the board with, and I quote, "ready access to such facilities, personnel, and information as the board considers necessary to carry out its responsibilities," end quote. DOE Order 140.1 is the topic of today's hearing. It is the primary vehicle that the department uses to implement the secretary's responsibilities for interface and cooperation with the board. Prior to May of 2018, the department implemented its interface with the board through a DOE manual, a lower level of department directive that was developed through close cooperation between our two agencies. The new order did not receive that same level of close cooperation during development. Because of fundamental changes introduced in the order, the board voted to hold this set of public hearings to discuss those changes with department leadership. In the first session today, the board will hear testimony from DOE Office of Environmental Management personnel regarding changes contained in the order, including the board's access to information, facilities, and personnel, and potential impacts to the board's resident inspector program. In the second session, members of the public may provide comments. The board announced this morning's hearing on October 24, 2018, on its public website, and subsequently posted a notice in the Federal Register on November 7, 2018. To ensure accurate and timely information, this hearing is being video streamed live, as well as recorded through video recording and a verbatim transcript. The transcript, associated documents, public notice, and video recording will be available for viewing on our public website. The board will make the video recording available on its website for at least 60 days. For the board's practice and as stated in the agenda, we will welcome comments from interested members of the public at approximately 11:30. A list of those speakers who have contacted us is posted at the entrance to this room. In general, we have listed the speakers in order which they contacted us, or if possible, when they wish to speak. We will call the speakers in this order and ask that each speaker state his or her name and affiliation, if any, at the beginning of the presentation. Members of the public who wish to provide comments but did not have an opportunity to notify us ahead of time may indicate their desire to comment on the sign-up sheet on the table at the entrance to this room. They will speak in the order which they sign up, following those who have pre-registered. To give everyone wishing to make a presentation an equal opportunity, we ask speakers to limit their comments to 10 minutes. The information presented should be limited to comments, technical information, or data concerning the subject of this hearing. The board members may question anyone providing comments to the extent members deem appropriate. The record of this hearing will remain open until December 28, 2018. Until that date, members of the public, including those observing today's hearing live via video streaming, may submit a written statement to the board to be included in the record. Contact information for submitting statements is available on our website, dnsfb.gov. The board reserves the right to further schedule and regulate the course of this hearing, to recess, reconvene, postpone, or adjourn this proceeding, and otherwise to exercise our authority on the Atomic Energy Act of 1954 as amended. This concludes my opening remarks as chairman. I will now turn to my fellow board members for their opening remarks. Ms. Roberson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do not have an opening statement.
Mr. Santos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, our fellow board members. Good morning. Assistant Secretary White, welcome. Thank you for accepting our invitation. Mr. Mullis, welcome. Mr. Crawford, good to see you back. Welcome. Thanks for being here. Other distinguished guests, stakeholders, and members of the public today in attendance or following today's hearing online. As I stated in the last public hearing, the board has a very important role in ensuring public health and safety. We provide confidence and transparency to the American people through our independent and continuous nuclear safety oversight that the programs of the Department of Energy execute their important operational missions safely, and that they do not become complacent in their responsibilities to protect the American people against undue risk from radiation in the activities performed at DOE defense nuclear facilities. For the board to be effective and add value in ensuring public health and safety, it is paramount that the Secretary of Energy, as operator and regulator of defense nuclear facilities, fully cooperates with the board and provide the board with ready access to facilities, personnel, and information as the board considers necessary to carry out its responsibilities. Without this ready access and cooperation from the Department of Energy, we will not be timely in performing our statutory duties. It's that simple. Since issuance of Order 140.1, it is clear based on our independent oversight that the implementation of 140.1 is lagging, or that the order is not being implemented as written or consistently throughout the Department of Energy. The new order has generated some confusion and resulted in some delay accessing some information. For example, information associated with a criticality database at Los Alamos. However, as of today, my understanding is that the Department of Energy continues to eventually provide the information the board deems necessary to accomplish its mission. Furthermore, it is not clear whether or not the current state is going to change, or if the information will be provided to the board in a timely manner. Since our last public hearing on September 17, 2018, the board sent a letter to the Secretary of Energy regarding Order 140.1, where we describe our specific concerns and express our willingness to collaborate on appropriate revisions to better establish the interface between the two federal agencies. As of today, the board has not received any formal response from the Department of Energy. About the same time, on September 12, 2018, the board unanimously approved that the DNSF staff generate a redline strikeout version of DOE Order 140.1 containing specific revisions that the staff considers necessary to address all the concerns with the order. This document has been delivered to the board. This document, as well as the information gained from this series of public hearings, and our experiences with ready and timely access to defense nuclear facilities, personnel, and information, will enable the board to identify and propose further actions that will ensure the board can continue to ensure adequate protection of public health and safety. This concludes my opening statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Ms. Connery.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. I want to thank Assistant Secretary White for taking the time today to come talk to us. This is our second hearing on Order 140.1, and we didn't have the opportunity to speak with the Office of Environmental Management during the last hearing, so we thought it was important to do so today, given the number of defense nuclear facilities under your purview, and the importance of the work you do within the complex and its impacts on the surrounding communities. We posed many questions with regard to this order, the department's intent, the expectations for the execution of the order, and ultimately, the impact that full implementation of this order on nuclear safety. We proposed those questions to Mr. Maury and Mr. White, no relation, during our last hearing, and I don't want to take up a lot of time right now, but I do want to revisit briefly the main questions that I have for the department, and those questions remain today even after the first hearing. First, I'd like to know what problem this order intends to solve. After 30 years of interaction with the board, the department has issued an order that doesn't simply quantify the status quo of interactions between the board and the department, but changes the interaction significantly in our view, and seems to endeavor to limit the board's access and authorities to defense nuclear facilities. Therefore, my first question is, why? What problem are we trying to solve? My second question has to do with any changes in expectations in the department's view on how we do business. And specifically, Ms. White, I'd be interested to know during the course of the hearing today if there are any changes that you envision, either positive or negative, as a result of the issuance of this order and the full implementation. And finally, I want to understand your philosophy on safety. We see a number of trends within the department as a whole in making changes to its safety strategy, including a rewrite of 10 CFR 830, the federal rule on nuclear safety, which is in rulemaking now, and also, some of its associated standards are also in the process of being revised. There seems to be some connection to the elements within Order 140.1 and DOE's own efforts to have a graded approach to nuclear safety, and I'd like to understand the department's overall intentions when it comes to that. With that, thank you again for taking the time to come here today. I appreciate the magnitude of your day-to-day job, and I take your presence here as an indication of your dedication to the health and safety of your workers and the public. I look forward to your remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Connery. I'm going to make a couple of personal remarks. First of all, I will formally introduce you in just a moment, Ms. White, but before I do so, I personally want to thank you for being here today. As you are aware, DOE 140.1, Order 140.1, is a contentious issue. It's a contentious topic, but I want to assure you that the questions today are not intended to be argumentative or confrontational, or in any way to try to find some differences between what you say and what other DOE officials have said. Likewise, the purpose of today's hearing is not to present arguments or critiques. Rather, we are here only to determine what DOE Order 140.1 means to you and how you plan to implement it within the Office of Environmental Management. These conclude my personal remarks. At this time, I will formally introduce the panel for the first section. This includes the Honorable Ms. Ann White, Assistant Secretary for the Office of Environmental Management, Mr. John Mullis, manager of the Oak Ridge Office of Environmental Management, and Mr. Chris Rossetti, our Technical Director here at the Defense Board. We are pleased to have you, Ms. White and Mr. Mullis, today. Thank you. Welcome to our public hearing. Ms. White, I understand that you wish to provide an opening remark, so the floor is yours.
Good morning. I welcome the opportunity to provide opening remarks for this session at today's public hearing on the department's interface with the board. I want to thank the board for this opportunity for open and transparent discussions. I also want to introduce Mr. Jay Mullis, our Oak Ridge Site Manager for EM. Since my Senate confirmation, I've had the pleasure of meeting with the board members and look forward to a continued strong working relationship with the board. At the first hearing related to this order, Board Member Roberson made a comment that I found particularly resonant. She stated, "The board hopes the department doesn't see the board as competitive but complementary to ensuring safety." I wholeheartedly agree with that statement and will work to create that environment, not only at this hearing, but also as we progress the EM cleanup mission. I'm here to offer my perspectives on the interface of the board with the Department of Energy and the intended changes from the transition from the former DOE manual to Order 140.1. I will focus my perspectives on this interface as they relate to the Office of Environmental Management. At the previous hearing, the board heard from the Deputy Secretary, the Associate Undersecretary for Environmental Health and Safety, and the Chief of Staff for NNSA. At that hearing, much of the basis and process for developing the order was discussed. As you recall, the Deputy Secretary of Energy issued a memorandum in October of 2017 addressing the department's relationship with the board, which provides expectations for how the department will interact with the board and its staff. EM fully supports those expectations. I firmly believe that although the board and the department are independent agencies, we mutually serve beneficial and essential functions in that the board's independent analysis, advice, and recommendations are vital to DOE ensuring adequate protection of public health and safety of the department's defense nuclear facilities and operations. We have and shall continue to benefit from your technical expertise, insights, and recommendations. I must affirm that as the secretarial officer charged with the safe operations of the environmental management program, I take full responsibility for that safety for which Congress and the public holds us accountable. I am affirming my commitment to carry out our mission as a federal program office in a safe, secure, and environmentally responsible way. The department is dedicated to providing reasonable assurance of protection of the public health and safety, protecting the health and safety of our workers, and accepting full responsibility for any and all outcomes of our efforts. The board provides valuable insight and advice that the department both appreciates and takes into consideration, but ultimately, DOE cannot abdicate our responsibility to manage the risks associated with our facilities and operations in an appropriate and conscientious fashion. Our work is critical to lowering the environmental risk posed by the legacy of the Cold War. EM line management must be held accountable, and we must have clear roles and responsibilities to ensure this is the case. These are guiding principles ingrained in how we do work safely. To that end, it is important for there to be clear distinction between the responsibility associated with our ownership of our defense nuclear facilities and the role of external advisors, including the board. The DOE order, which the department issued in May of this year to supersede an outdated manual, is consistent with governing legislation and does not hinder cooperation with the board or prevent the board from providing independent analysis, advice, and recommendations to the secretary to ensure adequate protection of public health and safety at the department's defense nuclear facilities. The order provides direction to DOE personnel and not the board personnel, and therefore cannot act to limit the board's access and conduct of their charged tasks. At the working level within EM, we have continued to conduct routine interface with the board staff, as we have done for many years. I'm not aware of any impairments to the ability of EM or board staff to provide information or discuss issues regardless of the hazard category or the safety class control status. Regarding adequate protection of the public health and safety, this is our primary point of interface and should be the focus of our interactions and partnership. DOE federal and contractor employees are highly experienced and trained to execute their work in and around the hazards posed by our work. Their safety is the focus of our training programs and multiple requirements established by our governing regulations, directives, standards, and procedures. While we value our advice on these matters, this should never detract from our shared focus on protecting public health and safety. We will continue to engage in dialogue related to worker health and safety, and will appropriately consider advice, whether formal or informal, as we have in the past and we do from many sources, including the board. On the issue of access to draft or pre-decisional information, we reserve the right to control information in the pre-decisional phase. I believe it is a potentially ineffective use of our mutually limited resources to pursue interim staff positions that may not ultimately be relevant or implemented. Further, it is necessary for us to work through an internal deliberative process to develop our decisions prior to sharing them with others. This will ensure our subject matter experts can freely offer ideas and conceptual solutions, as well as ensuring our accountability and ownership of the resulting decisions. We will consider and share this information on a case-by-case basis if we believe the information is mature enough to make the interaction valuable. Finally, concerning oversight of hazard category three defense nuclear facilities, we note that in accordance with the definition of hazard category three, these facilities do not by definition pose a risk to public health and safety. While we welcome your review and comment to help ensure these facilities are properly categorized, as stated earlier, this interaction should not detract from our focus on facilities with higher hazard categorization, which could pose a risk to public health and safety, and should be our joint focus. Looking to the future, here are some of the things that myself and the department are committed to carrying out. I will continue to perform my role as facility owner and regulator, as well as steward for the taxpayer, in safely achieving the cleanup missions mandated by law to protect the public and lower the environmental liability for the country. DOE will continue to cooperate closely with the board and staff and provide complete access to the information needed to carry out the board's mission consistent with your legislative mandate. For example, in FY 2018, approximately 2,000 requests for information were made by the board and satisfied by DOE. A thousand of those requests were made and satisfied since the May 2018 issuance of the order. We will proactively engage with the board and staff so that we fully understand the basis and underlying analysis behind its advice or its draft recommendations, including the safety benefits it sees for defense nuclear facilities. Lastly, we will reinforce with DOE line managers the expectation that they make sound technical decisions drawing upon reasonably available information, including advice and observation from the board. Thank you again for inviting me today, and I'm looking forward to having a discussion with you.
Thank you, Ms. White. The board will now proceed with questions from the panel. I will begin with the first question to our Technical Director, Mr. Rossetti. Could you summarize for us the first public hearing that we had in August and the ensuing letter that the board sent to the Secretary of Energy on September 17, 2018, regarding DOE 140.1 and the interface manual?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On August 28, 2018, the board held its first public hearing concerning Department of Energy Order 140.1. Deputy Secretary Brulette provided a statement, and Mr. Ike White, Mr. Matt Maury, and I responded to board member questions on the development, content, impacts, and implementation of the order. In addition, the board heard comments from several public stakeholders, who all expressed concern with the order. In their lines of inquiry, board members focused on the specific language used in the order compared to the Atomic Energy Act, and how the order could be interpreted and implemented across the complex. Mr. White and Mr. Maury, in their testimony, discussed the training they provided to department personnel to ensure the intention of the order was clear, and to ensure consistent implementation. For instance, Mr. White stated, and I quote, "I led a training session for our field office managers, for our plants, for our laboratories, for our points of contact, to make sure that it was clear to them that we intended to continue to provide the board and its staff with ready access to all our nuclear facilities," close quote. Board members discussed concerns with this approach. For instance, Board Member Connery stated, and I quote, "Mr. White, the training seems to contradict what's in the order, so I would suggest that perhaps you align the order with how you're going to implement," close quote. The board in its September 17, 2018 letter to the Secretary of Energy stated that the first public hearing confirmed that the board's, and I quote, "apprehension that DOE Order 140.1 wrongly attempts to diminish the board's ability to perform its statutory mandate under the Atomic Energy Act of 1954 as amended," close quote. Regarding the differences in Order 140.1 compared with the prior interface manual, I request Exhibit 1 to be entered into the record, which summarizes the major changes. These changes were discussed at the August 28 public hearing and will be discussed during the course of today's public hearing, and include the department's new definition of public health and safety to include only individuals beyond the site boundaries, the department's new restriction on access to information for hazard category three and radiological defense nuclear facilities, the department's new restrictions on access to deliberative documents, pre-decisional documents, or deliberative meetings, the department's new requirements for contractors to refer all requests for information or access related to defense nuclear facilities, to departmental site liaison for determinations regarding response, and only to respond when formally tasked by the departmental site liaison.
Thank you, Mr. Rossetti. Do my fellow board members have any questions for Mr. Rossetti? Seeing none, Ms. Roberson, I believe you're next in the line of inquiry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you, Assistant Secretary White. Thank you for your statement, and thank you, Mr. Mullis, for being here. I saw you not too long ago. Thank you for the time you and your staff put in to make sure my interests and needs were met when I was at your site a few months ago. Thank you very much. The board has provided independent oversight of environmental management activities to advise the department on opportunities to improve nuclear safety and ensure adequate protection of public health and safety at your facilities since its creation. The board has specifically provided recommendations regarding the disposition of legacy nuclear material, storage of nuclear material, and risk reduction in excess defense nuclear facilities, which are at the heart of your program. Now, I know you touched on some of these in your opening statement, but I just want to ask a series of questions. You can elaborate as you feel free. First of all, to you, Assistant Secretary White, can you describe your organization's perspective on EM's relationship with the Defense Nuclear Facilities Safety Board members and members of the board's staff prior to the implementation of DOE Order 140.1?
I believe it's been a sound and productive relationship throughout the years of EM. I personally called the field to discuss any impacts or negative consequences since the order was put into place, and the relationships continue to be strong, productive, and very helpful.
Is there anything you expect needs to change in the relationship as a result of the order? Is there something EM thinks needed to change as a result of the order?
There really has been no change at the work face, and to me, that's where the rubber meets the road, is in the field where mission is getting delivered. And as I say, I personally called the sites to find out the status and how the working relationship was going, and was told resoundingly, "It's good." So...
So, has the board's independent safety oversight inhibited your ability to achieve your operational goals, or for you to ensure safety measures are in place to address operational execution of your mission?
The board has, over the years, provided substantial helpful advice and consultation. That's been much appreciated, so I would say no.
And if I can, I'd like to direct the same question to Mr. Mullis.
Sure. No, honestly, I've seen no change in the relationship with the board, and in fact, over the years, I think Oak Ridge EM at least, has enjoyed a very helpful relationship and an open and honest relationship with the site reps. And so, there's been a number of issues that have been presented to us over the years at our facilities, and transportation documents that have actually been helpful in identifying things that were new, that we were able to implement. So, frankly, I have not... So frankly, I have not seen a change in our interface with the issuance of the new order. I'd go on to say as well that we, as part of our contracting process, we actually have to formally ask the contractor what putting that into -- if there's a change or an impact with putting in the contract, and from our major D&amp;D contractors there, we've all gotten back that there's no change. So from their perspective as well, there's no impact to how we operate at Oak Ridge.
Thank you.
Just for the record, Mr. Mullis, you used the phrase "site representatives." We actually have resident inspectors, and it was not something that was your mistake. We used to call them "site representatives," but the Atomic Energy Act specifically refers to the authority to have resident inspectors, and so in cleaning up our own shop, we went back to the correct title per the legislation a couple of years ago.
Yes, sir.
And I know you know that, I just --
I misspoke on that.
Yeah, well, it's easy to do because our staff does it all the time. They -- in a bad -- 30 years of bad habit. Ms. White, I'd like to discuss some language in the order, and I'll read what the Atomic Energy Act says. It says, "The secretary will provide, quote, 'ready access to such facilities, personnel, and information as the board considers necessary to carry out its responsibilities,' end quote." In the order, the phrase "as the board considers necessary" is conspicuously absent. So that's just as little background. The order states the secretary or secretaries designate -- may deny access to information requested by the board. To your knowledge, has the secretary delegated any authority to deny access to the board, or how is that supposed to work? Do you know?
I'm not aware of any delegation of that authority.
Well, what happens if -- this is a hypothetical because it hasn't happened yet, but we need to discuss this because the order provides for it. What happens if the board requests access to information on something that the board considers necessary and that EM's personnel don't consider necessary? How do we resolve that conflict?
I would hope that we'd have a discussion about it, and that we would be completely transparent, especially with pre-decisional information. As I noted in my opening remarks, it's an opportunity for us to collectively come up with processes and approaches, and quite frankly, it gives the board an opportunity to review how well we're doing things all on our own, so there's some benefit in that. But I cannot imagine a situation where we end up at loggerheads, quite frankly. We've always had a good relationship.
Yeah, I would agree with that. The challenge that I'm trying to understand is how this language could affect that in the future. So that's the basis for my question. Ms. Connery.
So just a little bit of follow-up to that last point on the pre-decisional information. You said it's helpful for us to see how you guys take care of it yourselves. My challenge is if we're not in the room to see that interaction, it's hard for us to judge and assess whether or not, you know, that the department is doing its job both as regulator, as enforcer, and in its own oversight. So some of the tension, I think, comes from the fact that pre-decisional is nebulous in the order, and could be interpreted in several ways, but I just wanted to make that point because I understand that you don't want us to go down rabbit holes, that your staff have -- hasn't, you know, fully decided on a technical course of action. But how it goes through that decision-making process, for instance, is important to us so that we can actually see whether or not, if there are dissents among your technical staff, how that's addressed and adjudicated is how we evaluate whether or not there's a healthy safety culture, et cetera. So that's kind of why we're questioning that, not necessarily to say that anyone at the department is saying, you know, "No, we don't."
Right. Well, and, you know, we have a very healthy process for resolving differences of technical opinions that is formalized, and it's been used on many occasions. And we, in my experience to date, we come to a healthy resolution through that process, so.
Right. So I wanted to talk about the issue of safety class controls. You mentioned that in your opening statement, the issue about hazard categories and safety class controls. The order contains language that could impact our access to and information regarding facilities without safety class controls. I'll note that our enabling legislation and other parts of the Atomic Energy Act do not place restrictions on the board's ability to access facilities or information based on whether or not that facility has safety class controls. So I'm going to ask first, Mr. Rosetti, to discuss the implications of the order as written to the board's access-based exempt, just on the language and exemptions that are in the order, to not talk about where we are now, but what the problems that we see with the order and where they could be implemented later on. Mr. Rosetti.
Yes, ma'am. To help answer your question, I request Exhibit 2 be entered into the record, and I'll reiterate, as you did in your question, that my answer is predicated on the fact that this is a reading of the words in the order. So this exhibit was shared at the last public hearing and represents the staff's analysis of candidate defense nuclear facilities across the complex, broken down by potential restrictions as described in the Order 140.1. Reading the words in the order, the board's access could be limited to just those facilities with safety class controls, as indicated by the red arrow on the slide, representing a 71% reduction in the number of candidate defense nuclear facilities. Next, I request Exhibit 3 be entered into the record. It further illustrates the impacts of the order's restrictions by site. For the purposes of today's public hearing, sites with EM defense nuclear facilities are starred. The green bars represent the total number of candidate defense nuclear facilities at a given site. The red bars represent only the hazard category one and two defense nuclear facilities with safety class controls. You can see a large drop in the number of facilities at all EM sites. Notably, the Waste Isolation Pilot Plant does not have any safety class controls.
So, Ms. White, again, as we talked about -- as you talked about in your opening statement, you want to make sure that the board and the department are focused on the highest priority issues that impact the public health and safety. However, there's -- we also have to make sure that the public has reasonable assurance of public health and safety, and sometimes that doesn't equate to safety class control or the hazard categories as designated by the department. So I'm interested if you could discuss how EM is going to implement the language in the order when supporting the board and the board staff's access to information regarding facilities that don't have safety class controls. And the example that Mr. Rosetti pointed out is that WIP is a Hazcat II defense nuclear facility. It doesn't have safety class controls, but obviously, it's of vital importance to the nation and it's of great concern to the public and stakeholders.
So again, according to the field, the relationship has not changed. We have no intent to limit the board's access to information that you need to carry out your missions and mandates. Information requested by the board to conduct its mission will continue to be provided in accordance with the law. And importantly, too, as I've mentioned, the working relationship in the field is very important, and it's been successful, and it continues to be successful.
I appreciate that. So a follow-on question, and again, it goes to something that you said in your opening remarks, which is, how would you respond if the board provided a communication in the form of a letter or a recommendation related to a defense nuclear facility without a safety class control? Or, for instance, if we wanted to hold a hearing on what we're used our statutory authorities to give you a recommendation with regards to the WIP facility?
I'm sure we would not reject them.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mullis, the recent issue with waste drums in Idaho highlights the potential hazards associated with the storage and processing of transuranic wastes at the defense -- at the DOE facilities. Transuranic waste storage areas at the Oak Ridge National Lab don't have safety class controls. What information or access will EM provide to the board and its staff concerning these facilities? And what value do you see that the board and its staff can give to you to perform these oversight at these facilities?
So for all the EM-managed facilities that store true waste at Oak Ridge National Laboratory, you've always enjoyed your resident inspectors have always enjoyed access to that, and in fact, have, along and along, have given us suggestions, recommendations, et cetera, that have actually strengthened the operations out there. So I don't see how this is going to change that at all. So I think within the last month and a half, in fact, one of your debash came down and toured the facility and got the information he wanted, so I haven't seen that change over the years.
Mr. Santos has a follow-on to this line of inquiry, and then his own question. Mr. Santos.
I appreciate the words, and I've seen it since I've been at the board of the collaboration and the working relationships, and that's my hope, that they continue and that they do not change. I welcome and I'm very supportive of if there's areas that may be of impact, that we have a transparent and productive dialogue. The thing that gave me pause a little bit is if that's the case, and if those are some foundational things that we agreed on, why wasn't that level of cooperation and working together just to come up with an order that defines the interface? So if we talk about we want to collaborate, we want to be transparent, we want to work issues out, why can't we do that with starting with this order? So that's the part that makes me a little bit skeptical and question, is anything going to change? I want to be welcoming the dialogue, but we don't -- we didn't get to participate in the development on the order. That gave me some pause, so I hope you can appreciate that. And what I'm concerned about is the concept of timing. When it comes to nuclear safety, I think it's not only access, but timely access. And if we get caught up into a lot of bureaucratic debate on whether or not we need to see the information to then do the assessment, the -- there's -- safety could be impacted. Things can become overtaken by events, so the value of the board can be -- on oversight can be diminished. Because while we're trying to debate whether we have access or not, events might be happening or things might not be controlled. So those are two points I want to make.
And I think, just to be sure, Mr. Santos, there's no question in there. You're just making an observation.
No, I'm just making an observation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so no response required.
That's correct. So a question to Ms. White. Can you describe the EM implementation strategy for the order in terms of timing, training, your expectations of the implementation?
So as I understand it, training sessions were conducted by my staff out to the field that really highlighted the fact that this order clarifies roles and responsibilities. It applies to the department and our contractors, and it is not intended to preclude the board from doing your job.
Can you give me a little bit on time-wise for implementation? When do you expect?
I'll have -- I would have to get back with you on that. That's something that the staff is taking care of, and as I understand it, it's been completed.
I appreciate that we can get that for the record, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mullis, similar question, but at Oak Ridge. Can you describe some of the implementation efforts to date?
Sure. So my staff and myself participated in the rollout of the order and the subsequent training, and unless we get direction from headquarters, there's kind of a standard process we go through with each one of our contractors. We have several D&amp;D contractors and environmental management contractors in Oak Ridge, so each one of those contracts is a slightly different type of contract, so there's different timelines for that. But at this point in time, we've asked all our contractors through the contract process to evaluate impacts to implement the order, and then, of course, depending on that, we would either negotiate a contract change. If there's -- if they came back and said it's going to cost this much more money, we have to negotiate that in contract space. At this point, they've come back and said, "No impact," so we will move down the road to implement that. There's kind of a quarterly update typically to the standards that are in our contracts, and it would just go into that normal update. Of course, if there's a -- if it did have impacts, that would be different. We would have to go through a negotiation process. So that's kind of the timeline for that. So I would expect within the next six months, it'll be in all our contractors' contracts.
So if we could include that as part of, I guess, for all EM sites, including Oak Ridge, ma'am?
Absolutely. We'll get that data to you.
Thank you. You talk about training, Mr. Mullis. Can you describe the training and whether you participated yourself, or what's your perspective on the training? You can just give a little more detail.
Sure. It was -- training was done by VTC and call-in for each one of the sites, and there was a set of slides that was prepared, along with a copy of the order, and I think there were like a frequently asked questions kind of thing as well. And so there was a discussion by VTC led by headquarters. The first session was actually, I think, led by maybe AU, Mr. Maury's shop, and that's the one I think I participated in. There was a subsequent one that EM had as well that all the staff participated in, so all the site liaisons and backup liaisons, to my knowledge, on our side for the defense board participating. I can see my staff, and in fact, several of the FAC reps did as well, so for Oak Ridge.
So can you provide some of the feedback that got provided by either your, you know, team of federal employees or contractors, or any outside stakeholders that?
We did not share with outside stakeholders. We did -- I cannot remember frankly whether or not contractors participated in those training sessions or not. Typically, we would have a separate training session for contractors if they have questions. Normally, that's done, unless it's a huge change to something like 420, when the big change to 420 occurred a few years ago, we would not send them to that training. We would handle that on a case-by-case basis. I don't recall any specific feedback other than, "We've got a new order that we're putting in that replaces the manual." I don't remember anybody saying, "Oh, this is going to cause us not to do this or do that," so.
My -- the part that intrigues me is, I understand all of you saying there's no change, but a literal read of the order clearly shows change, and I'm just trying to understand how you all reconcile that. Was that emphasized as part of the training? Was that your own?
It was, it was, and it was in the slide. My recollection is, at least for the part I sat in, it was in the slide deck and in the set of questions as to what these things really meant, and what we got out of it was no big change. And the fact that the reason we were updating the order had been over a decade since the manual had been issued, and of course, over time, we tried to become more disciplined in our command media, and, you know, we used to operate under the old four-digit orders, and over time, that has changed as we've migrated to three-digit orders. So my perspective was, after sitting through the training, it was simply a matter of trying to update our command media to be more in line with how all the other DOE orders and manuals operate at this time and implementation guidance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Santos. Ms. Connery.
So, given the fact that the order is written as a DOE-wide order, and defense nuclear facilities largely fall in either EM, Environmental Management, or in the National Nuclear Security Administration, the semi-autonomous National Nuclear Security Administration, I just have a couple of questions about how that interface works when you're on a site where there was the presence of both NNSA and EM, because that often causes tension within the department, you know, having lived through that on your side of the fence, and so I'm wondering how interactions with the defense board may be impacted by that. So, Ms. White, at several of your field locations where there's both EM and NNSA defense nuclear facilities, like Savannah River, EM conducts the cleanup activities at H Canyon, while NNSA conducts the tritium activities in H area using the same contractor. Can you discuss how EM and NSA coordinate to ensure consistent implementation of interface with the board, or if there's been any challenges that you've seen in that way?
We have a number of sites where, as you say, there's both EM facilities and NNSA facilities. We enjoy a cooperative relationship with our semi-autonomous sister organization, and we're always actually working to improve those communications. We just started a project recently, not related to the defense board, that's around that very topic, so. And certainly, if you become aware of any rubs regarding that, please let us know, and we'll address it.
Thank you. Mr. Mullis, how do you anticipate working with NNSA relative to the board interface during your upcoming environmental management work at the Y-12 site, specifically to the decommissioning work at Alpha 5?
Well, I don't see that changing dramatically as it has over the last several years. I mean, we've always had facilities and work going on out there, and at one point in time, Y-12 was part of Oak Ridge, and of course, Oak Ridge broke apart into separate entities. When I was the defense board liaison and ran the nuclear safety program, I certainly contacted and stayed in touch with my counterparts over there, and vice versa, for the different recommendations and things that were occurring. While we share information and we will do our best to coordinate, we don't speak for them, they don't speak for us. And so at times, there's been a different approach. And so at times, there's been a different approach, site dispersion analysis, things like that, out of the two organizations. And so to the extent we can cooperate and the extent we can give a unified approach, we will. But given that EM work is different than the work they do, I think there's going to be times as well when things may be a little bit misaligned, quite frankly. So.
So the point I'm trying to get at is with the implementation of the interface document, 140 of the order, we do enjoy a close working relationship with EM at the site representative, sorry, the resident inspector level, as well as with NNSA. But what we've noticed is that there's different approaches as to say, who has the authority to decide that something's pre-decisional? Who gives the authority to release a document? And sometimes, say on the NNSA side, it may go up to a field-level NNSA person, and on the EM side, it might be somebody at a different level. And we're just wondering whether or not that will be calibrated. It doesn't necessarily have to be, but will that have impacts on how we interact with you, or whether or not we'll be able to get the timely information we need? And I could direct that at Ms. White.
So as Jay mentioned, they're independent organizations. Speaking for EM, if there's issues or problems, we want to hear about it. And I hope that if things come up, there will be a dialogue.
It's me again, sorry. So we're going to geek out a little bit on the nuclear safety side of the House. And one of the lines of inquiry during our previous public hearing regarded the integrated nature of safety. In an integrated safety management system, the erosion of the capabilities of facilities without safety class controls or facilities with low analyzed consequences to off-site individuals could be lead indicators of an extensive condition with implications to facilities with significant analyzed consequences to off-site individuals. This concept is explained in great detail in the board's technical report 20, Protection of the Co-located Worker at the Department of Energy's Defense Nuclear Facility and Sites. Catching and correcting failures at the lowest levels can predict and prevent larger-scale problems that could lead to off-site releases to the public. So this is a conversation that we started earlier with regards to category-three facilities and facilities without safety class controls. So, Mr. Mullis, as a longtime safety professional, can you discuss the relationship between the deficiencies identified at facilities without safety class controls and the potential implications for higher hazard facilities? For example, if you find issues associated with future decommissioning work at Alpha 5 at lower hazard facility at Y-12, how would you apply those lessons learned to more hazardous decommissioning activities?
So we're all the time trying to apply lessons learned. For instance, we had a lot of lessons learned at ETP on how to deactivate and DND gaseous diffusion plant. We recognize that those weren't necessarily completely applicable to the new work we would be getting into at Y-12. And so there's lessons learned that we could apply, we have. And we've gone in and tried to do some approaches to work to figure out what it's like to work with mercury, and we're having some hard lessons learned on that. With respect to things we might learn in a less hazardous facility, we certainly would apply those to a more hazardous facility. I guess I don't see the distinction that I think folks are trying to make between a HSCAT-2 facility with safety class controls and a HSCAT-2 facility without safety class controls and a HSCAT-3 facility. If they all have the same hazard, they have the same hazard, and we would approach that hazard appropriately. Okay? Now, off-site consequences may drive control selection, right? So it might differ between how close to the site boundary you are versus how far away from the site boundary to direct what might get HSCAT-2 controls or safety class controls and might have safety significant controls. But as far as the hazard, we will address hazards as we find them. And if we have lessons learned, for instance, I forget which one, board members mentioned, Idaho, maybe New York. But as soon as we heard about that, we started developing lessons learned and trying to look and see if we had similar drums within our population at TWPC, Transuran Waste Processing Facility.
So I think you made my point, which is that these categorizations are somewhat artificial in terms of how we see our oversight. We see our oversight as being equal at all categories because there's no difference in how you approach those safety issues, and they're integrated. So I appreciate that.
Well, if I might elaborate, I would say the only thing is the worth of the control and the control selection, right?
Correct.
But again, that's our internal documents that are applicable to DOE. I don't know that they would apply to you at all.
Right. And your control selection is obviously the choice of the department.
Correct.
We just analyze it for our purposes to see if it's appropriate for the situation at hand. So you gave me a great lead-in. As we discussed earlier, Ms. White, at transuradic waste issues, notably at WIP and most recently at Idaho, those are examples where it's important that DOE and the board evaluate the extent of condition and determine valuable lessons that can be applied across the complex. So you're doing that, and we're doing that as well. These facilities also don't have safety class controls and could be excluded from the board oversight by the order. So can you discuss DOE's approach in reviewing safety information at all your facilities to identify the extent of condition issues and lessons learned that could be applied across the DOE complex?
Yeah, so as Jay mentioned, we're always looking at lessons learned across the complex. We've got a very robust oversight system within EM itself, as well as other areas of the department. So we enjoy that relationship and that input, and also from the board. So the lessons learned component is very important. And, you know, we learned a lot of lessons with WIP, for example. So we're constantly striving to do better and learn more throughout our mission.
Thank you. I'm a big fan of your operational experience, formalization of those lessons learned, and we encourage that at all points. But I just want to, closing on this topic, to state that this confirms my belief that safety oversight information gathered at all defense nuclear facilities are needed to help address the most challenging nuclear safety issues facing the DOE complex. And that's why we're concerned about access to all of the facilities and having our board be able to conduct reviews, our board staff be able to conduct reviews at, regardless of hazard category facilities and regardless of safety class controls. Thank you.
Board member Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to explore a topic that, the topic of workers is an essential part of public health and safety, that I worry that either we and the department are talking past each other, or I don't know what's happening. But the board has provided recommendations and other formal advice to department in areas that include a focus on safety of the workers at defense nuclear facilities. And can we put Exhibit 4 up? So this is a list of some examples. It's by far not exhaustive. One example I want to focus on as it relates to the environmental management program is board recommendation 2012-1, Savannah River Site, Building 235F. In this recommendation, the board identified inadequate controls for fire scenarios with an unmitigated dose consequence of multiple thousands of REM to more than 1,000 co-located workers who were routinely near Building 235F. The secretary accepted the board's recommendation and stated in the department's implementation plan, and I'll try to quote this, "This IP focuses on addressing the corrective actions necessary to confirm assurance of adequate co-located worker protection," end quote. The recommendation is still open today, and we see progress. We're very supportive of that. It's open with ongoing actions by DOE and the contractor to address the issues identified in the board's recommendation. I guess if we were to issue this recommendation today as we read DOE Order 140.1, as it certainly includes focus on some worker safety issues, would the department reject that recommendation?
We'd certainly look at the input and evaluate it. In the 235F situation, there were many reasons to try and reduce the combustible load. You don't want a fire at any nuclear facility of any variety. So that was a very welcome recommendation. As you said, we've been working on it. So certainly, we take input from anyone on improved worker health and safety.
So, and I just want to explore for a minute. I appreciate that. I guess what we struggle with when we look at some of the proposals, advice, recommendations to the department, and we look at the order, we're trying to understand where the department sees the line. And so that's just a good example. There were certainly a variety of issues raised, but there were specific issues raised that related to protection of co-located workers or even facility workers. And I'm just trying to target in, would that be across the line?
So this is, as you well know, probably a longstanding jurisdictional question that has been a matter of discussion for years. And probably, general counsel might be the best sort of resource, ours and yours, on this particular topic. Because as I say, it's been a longstanding discussion. For me, anyway, worker health and safety is extremely important. I worked in the field in my career, and I benefited from the nuclear safety culture. And I understand that it's extremely important. So we're always going to ensure that our workers are safe and protected through multiple programs, including 835.
Thank you, Assistant Secretary. So we did ask this in the last hearing, and we've asked it outside of hearings. And one of the things we've been told is, the Atomic Energy Act does not say that the board provides oversight of workers, only the public. So, and it's true, the Atomic Energy Act does not specify workers, but it doesn't specify any safety system or protective measures to be utilized to ensure the adequate protection of public health and safety. For instance, the act does not list confinement ventilation systems or fire suppression systems as essential, although the board has proposed and DOE has agreed by its own actions to the significant role these systems have in ensuring adequate protection. From our perspective, the department continues to expand its reliance on administrative controls implemented by workers versus passive engineered features. Do your nuclear operations execute actions as a part of your safety construction for ensuring protection of public health and safety? Do you rely on worker training, worker qualifications, and worker availability to execute actions that are necessary to ensure adequate protection at your facilities?
I would say that we are always compliant with the law. And again, we take input on all issues related to worker safety from all parties.
Okay. Mr. Mullis?
On the specific question about do we rely on worker action, absolutely. I mean, in TSRs, you have required staffing requirements, things like that. You have SACS as well. So yes, short answer to it is yes. And we look at co-located workers, facility workers, and public health and safety.
Right. And we know this, we provide oversight, and you all know this too. And we expect you'll continue to expand that reliance as facilities age, or you approach work in access facilities where systems may not have been maintained to today's standards. So we see that as something that's here. The board recognized it when it issued a recommendation on admin controls, and it worked with the department on that. And so we know that's true across the complex. So thank you. The last question I have on workers is, I personally, and I raised this in the last hearing too, am concerned that the language in the order that exempts board oversight of worker safety could be interpreted by personnel at defense nuclear facilities to direct them that they are not to communicate worker safety issues to the board. Now, and I'll say this is not just workers in an operation, it could be federal workers. No oversight function, including your own, can be successful if the people inside do not feel free to raise safety issues they do not believe have been properly understood or appropriately addressed. And we are no different than that. I guess what I'm asking, and I'm directing this to you, Mr. Mullis, but Ms. White, you're welcome to address it. How will you ensure this is not the overtly spoken or silently whispered message received by the workers at your facilities?
So we always strive to have a good, open safety culture. All our contractors do safety culture surveys. We grade them as best we can on their safety culture performance. We have the same thing. We just completed our safety culture survey as well. And so we have a number of different systems. If you can't get resolution via the normal chain of command, you have DPO process. You can call the IG and be anonymous. And so those things are occurring all the time, where we're getting concerns from both contractor workers and DOE workers through various and usundary means, whether that's in staff meetings, or whether that's through the DPO process, or whether that's through calling the IG about safety concerns they might have anonymously. So I don't see this order impacting that at all, based on what I've seen, at least in Oak Ridge over the past couple of years, all those systems are being used robustly.
And let me say, all those systems are in place, and they are synonymous with any agency. But I'm specifically focused on technical issues as it relates to safety controls and ensuring adequate protection. We certainly, as I'm sure you do, hear from workers across the complex. And what we're concerned about is a message that says the board has no role as it relates to the workers at our facility could certainly translate into a message we think is the wrong message.
Yeah. I don't see that message being out there. When I get something back from the contractor saying, we see no impact for implementing this order, to me, that tells me there's not going to be some overt hidden message that's being provided to the worker at the work face to not talk to the board staff.
We should just all be diligent, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Board member Santos.
I would like to follow up on that. As you know, a key component to nuclear safety is adherence to stringent set of requirements. And for that, you have a robust infrastructure. So help me understand a little bit, because the phrase we keep hearing today, which is one that I accept, I want to believe it, is the no change. The order results in no change. But as you know, you're going to have some of this order be implemented in the contracts. And I want to understand whether no impact equals no change. Because contractors typically follow the letter of the requirements. So if they apply a strict implementation and read of the requirements that in their contracts, I'm trying to understand how that's not going to result in, how that's going to result in no change. So I'm trying to understand the difference between no impact, which tends to be caused, versus no change in the way they interface with the order, given the language. Could you expand on that?
Assume that's directed at me.
Yes.
Okay.
And Ms. White, too.
So, again, the order applies to DOE and our contractors. And our contractors will use the path that we've asked them to, which is to go through the department on these topics. And that's, in my opinion, reasonable and appropriate. It just clarifies roles, responsibilities, and lines of communication.
So a contractor may literally read no access, but then when he approaches the department officials, then the department official will say, no, 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 no change. They do get access. Is that a way to read this?
I can't, so I can't imagine a situation in which if the resident inspectors or anyone from the board wanted access to a hazard category-three facility, that we would deny it. So that's what I can say.
Okay. And to Mr. Rosetti, do you have any evidence or anything from our resident inspectors where the new order has resulted in some challenges to have ready access?
No, sir, I don't have any examples regarding our resident inspectors having issues with access at EM facilities.
What about other elements, other programs?
I think at the last public hearing on August 28, 2018, we described some issues regarding access to information in general, but not necessarily specific to the resident inspectors.
And that includes both with the DOE federal employees and the contractors? And that includes both with the DOE federal employees and the contractors?
The way that the Board staff interacts with the Department regarding access to information, we have federal liaisons that we work through for information. So they're the final deciders as to whether we get the information we request. And when we make the request, we follow the site procedures in the instance of the resident inspectors. And for Headquarters staff, we fill out a form, there's a formal request made. And again, the federal liaisons are the ones who ensure that the contractors provide that information we request.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. I have a short follow-on from Mr. Rosetti on this line of inquiry. Does the Atomic Energy Act as amended refer to hazard categories?
No, sir. The Atomic Energy Act as amended does not refer to hazard categories.
Where are they defined, and who makes that decision?
So I believe it's DOE Standard 1027 references hazard category one, two, and three, and then radiological defense nuclear facilities. As far as who makes that determination, it's a process that the contractors would propose, and the federal entities would then approve or bottom line.
Okay. So I'm correct to say that the Atomic Energy Act does not address hazard categories, and that is a DOE construct? Is that a correct statement?
Yes, sir, that's a correct statement.
New line of inquiry, and the good news, Mr. Mullis, I was going to ask you about deliberative documents and pre-decisional documents and deliberative meetings, but we pretty much beat that to death. Ms. White addressed it in her opening remarks and took all of your thunder. But I've got one just short question. Would you put up Exhibit Five, please? And these are, I'm going to introduce this into the record, this is a list of potential situations that might be considered pre-decisional or deliberative. I don't want to go through all of them. I just want to look at the third bullet, a fact-finding or fact-gathering meeting following an abnormal event. So you have an abnormal event somewhere, and you're going to have a fact-finding. Would you consider that the kind of thing where a resident inspector wants to see it, and you would say that's deliberative and, or pre-decisional, and you can't join us? Or how would you view that particular one?
Is that directed at me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. First of all, I hate talking about hypotheticals, because sometimes every event's unique. But typically, we have not excluded the Board from a fact-finding meeting following an off-normal event or an emergency.
Okay. And you don't think that that order would have you, drive you to do that?
I do not. I do not see that changing, because that question has existed since I've worked for the Department, and the Defense Board was around. There are times when we need to have frank and open discussions, and having a Board staff member sitting there is actually intimidating for some folks, and you don't get the free and open discussion. So that tension has existed for quite some time, and it predates this order. And the way we've at least handled that in Oak Ridge over the years is a case-by-case basis. It's rare, but it has happened. And I've called the resident inspectors and asked them not to step in to it, and worked through that, that we would give them a meeting after the fact. I mean, there are times when we need to have meetings with our contractors as well with that Board staff there, because there's contract-sensitive stuff, so.
Okay, thank you. That's a very nuanced answer, and I appreciate the capturing all those thoughts. The Board Member Santos?
Thank you. To Mr. Rosetti, I mean, the interface order provides guidance and direction to DOE personnel and contractor personnel for interfacing with the Board and the Board staff. In a similar manner, the Board staff provides guidance to interfacing with the DOE and contractor personnel. Can you discuss the guidance the Board staff uses in interfacing with the Department of Energy and its contractors?
Yes, sir. The guidance given to the Board's technical staff on interfacing with the Department comes from Board policies and internal technical staff procedures. The technical staff receives initial and refresher training on these policies and procedures. The Board currently has eight approved policies, which establish how the Board will carry out its oversight mission. These policies include requirements and guidance for staff on interfacing with the Department. For example, Policy Statement Seven, Communication and Disposition of Safety Item, states, and I quote, "No suggestion implicitly or explicitly shall be made for DOE and DOE contractors to take any actions," close quote, "by the technical staff during their interactions with the Department." The technical staff's internal procedures include guidance on how to conduct reviews, which are the primary mechanism by which Headquarters staff interface with the Department and its contractors. A number of the requirements in our internal procedures were developed to align with the Department's previous interface manual, as the Board had reviewed the Department's manual prior to its issuance to ensure consistency in interface requirements. For example, one of the technical staff's internal procedures on obtaining information from the Department uses the approach and form that was included in the previous manual.
Thank you. And a question to Ms. White, given the feedback and some of the comments you heard, will you and the Department consider incorporating some of the formal feedback the Board is providing to revise the current order?
I can't speak for the entire Department, but certainly I've listened to your input and understand some of your concerns, and we'd really need to just get back with you on that.
Okay, I'm sorry?
We need to get back with you on that.
Oh, I look forward to that. Thank you.
Yep.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Santos. The last line of inquiry for this morning goes to Ms. Connery.
I think, Ms. Roberson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have a question, Ms. Roberson?
I did have a quick follow-up if I could.
Go ahead, Ms. Roberson.
To Mr. Santos' question, we talked about the request for information. Maybe there are other twos that were encompassed in the previous manual. Are those encompassed in the new order?
You're asking me, Ms. Roberson?
Yes, sir.
Could you repeat that question, please?
Okay. Like, the approach and form that we had, the Department and the Board had developed and agreed to in the manual, you said we've adopted that into our internal procedures. But is that captured in the new order?
The new order is much more, it's slimmed down.
So that's a no?
It's a nuanced no. I would say at a high level, it captures the basic premise of how we previously interacted under the manual. But as far as the very specific guidance that the manual contained, that guidance is not contained in the new order. And I'll use as an example the form for requesting information. That was a very, it was a detailed process in the manual. That form is not even included in the order. But we continue to use it to formally request information at the staff level.
And I understand that. I guess my question is maybe to Ms. White or Mr. Mullis, who may be more active in responding to some of these. We're assuming that we can rely on those arrangements that were laid out in the previous manual, even though they're not incorporated into the order. I don't know. Is that a fair assumption for us to make?
I think it is. I know the form that was referenced here has been in use for years, and it continues to be in use. So I think where systems aren't broken, we're not going to fix them, so.
I agree with that.
Thank you, Ms. Roberson. Board Member Connery for the last question this morning.
I'd like to get the last word. Just kidding. So the last line of questioning is along the lines of my opening, and it's a bit broader. I mean, we're here because, you know, we find that the order is contradictory to our statute. But at the base of it, it's about safety, and that's what we're interested in, and that's what the Department's interested in, and I believe that's where our common ground lies. So the topic that I want to talk about is about the Department's view and changes that it's making to its approach to ensuring adequate protection, both with respect to the new interface order and changes that we've seen in TNCF 830 and its associated documents. This seems to be a moment in time where DOE is trying to create more flexibility for itself, which I understand, but is also an effort, in my view, to maybe reduce DOE and Board oversight in some of these areas to afford that flexibility. And I understand that's a dynamic tension. So for 30 years, the Board has been a part of the Department's overall safety framework. The Board and the Department have had a collaborative relationship and made a number of safety improvements to defense nuclear facilities that have otherwise eluded the Department's internal mechanisms for safety oversight. So now the DOE appears to be changing their approach to nuclear safety. And at the same time, the hazards that you face, you in particular in your environmental management cleanup mission, are becoming more complex. And I, again, recognize your need to balance timely completion of the mission with safety, and sometimes timely completion of the mission equals safety. Have you considered whether or not this change in philosophy that's reducing the role of DOE or Board oversight may have a negative effect on nuclear safety?
I wouldn't characterize it as a change in philosophy, for me, anyway, and for the leadership as well. I frequently say, don't even make me say "and" safely, because it's a baseline assumption in the work we do. And as I mentioned, I benefited from the safety culture as somebody who's been in the field doing the work, and it's extremely important. So I would not say the Department is changing their philosophy on safety. The only way to do work is safely.
I appreciate that. I think that my last, I won't ask a question, because I understand where you stand on that. I think our concern is that Congress was clear when it created the Board that they were concerned about DOE's expert-based safety, as well as becoming complacent in its approach to nuclear safety. And I worry that trend lines tend to go up and down with regard to that. And at this point in time, the Board has its own struggles, as, you know, is evidenced in the press, and the Department's been having its struggles with safety culture. You've got turnover in workforce, and again, complex, difficult tasks ahead of you. So I just don't know that now is the time to make broad changes that could have impacts to safety going forward.
So I hear your concern. And again, I just, I really want to emphasize this point, that we really cannot have successful projects without safe projects. It just can't happen. And Ms. Roberson can actually attest to the fact that at Rocky Flats, as production went up, safety statistics got better. And it had to do with the cadence of the work and the rhythm and being in the routine. Our workers are well-trained, well-qualified. So I understand where you're coming from, but I think we are solid in this area, absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Connery. I'd like to call on the Board members now to see if they have any last questions or comments before we take a recess. Mr. Santos?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Board Member Connery?
No, thank you.
Board Member Roberson?
Briefly, Mr. Chairman, just in the event that you won't be here until the end of the hearing, I just want to say thank you for your contribution. I'm sure the other Board members, like myself, will take your input as a part of the total package, where we're trying to determine what the order means to the Board and the Department's going-forward relationship. So thank you.
Mr. Santos, ask for a second.
I want a second, because in case you decide you need to leave. Again, thank you, and I really openly look forward to continue the strong collaboration, continue the dialogue. Because at the end of the day, you're absolutely right. We're both caring about the same thing, which is the American public health and safety. So I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hearing no other questions or comments from the Board, I want to thank you, Ms. White, and Mr. Mullis for your participation this morning. We will take a 10-minute recess, at which time we will reconvene for the public comment period. We are in recess. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I would like to reconvene our hearing for Session Two, the public comment period. I will turn the proceedings over to our acting General Counsel, Mr. Joseph Gilman. Mr. Gilman?
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. At this time, the Board would like to provide an opportunity for comments from interested members of the public. A list of those speakers who have contacted the Board is posted at the entrance to this room. We have generally listed the speakers in the order in which they contacted us. I will call the speakers in this order and ask that the speakers state their name and affiliation at the beginning of their comments. There is also a table at the entrance to this room with a sign-up sheet for members of the public who wish to make comments but did not have the opportunity to notify us ahead of time. They will follow those who have already registered in the order in which they have signed up. To give everyone wishing to make a comment equal opportunity, we ask that speakers limit their original comments to 10 minutes. I will warn each speaker when he or she has 90 seconds remaining, and then again, when there is 30 seconds remaining. The Chair will then give consideration for additional time if the schedule allows. Remarks should be limited to comments, technical information, or data concerning the subject of this public hearing. The Board members may question anyone providing comments to the extent deemed appropriate. The Chairman would like to introduce our first speaker, so I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gilman. I'm going to take Chairman's prerogative to introduce our first speaker, Captain Jack Crawford. Mr. Crawford served as a member of our Board from its inception in 1989 until 1996. He served with distinction with the Atomic Energy Commission as a principal deputy assistant secretary for nuclear energy. He was deputy manager for naval reactors under Admiral Hyman Rickover. And most notably, he is a survivor of the sinking of the aircraft carrier USS Yorktown during the Second World War. That trumps everything else in his bio, as far as I'm concerned. Captain Crawford, when you made your remarks during the, can you hear me, sir? When you made, can you hear me okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
When you made, when you made your remarks during our August hearing, you gave us some written remarks and written questions, which we included in the record, to be asked to the Department of Energy. We have woven most of those questions into our lines of inquiry today. So I want to thank you for your submission, and I want to assure you that your experience, wisdom, and insight continue to be highly valued. So thank you, Mr. Crawford. Please, you have the floor. I'm going to give you 10 minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
I have three questions. The first is a statement. The Board's letter of September 17, 2018, states that the Board's primary concerns are in its disclosure. They are in four categories as follows: exemptions, public health and safety, determinations of access, and deliberative information. All appear to be capable of being resolved so as to be consistent with the Board's enabling legislation. Is it not, however, important that the Board appears not to, does not consider lack of technical expertise within DOE a matter of primary importance? I say appears, because it may be that you do, but it is not evident in the correspondence. Second question. The agenda for Session One has as a goal, gather information on DNFSB interface and access to information facilities and personnel managed by the Department of Energy Office of Environmental Management. Now, does this mean that the latter, namely, the Office of Environmental Management, has line management responsibilities for efforts of the DOE line in building, operating, and maintaining defense nuclear facilities? Because if it does, this violates a fundamental principle of safety, namely, that responsibility for safety can only, only be met by those responsible for doing the work involved. Others may help, but this does not lessen the responsibility of line management Others may help, but this does not lessen the responsibility of line management for safety. Moreover, the purpose of DOE, or the stated purpose of DOE Order zero-one-forty-point-one is to emphasize line management and responsibility. Finally, question number three. The board's enabling legislation requires it to, and I quote, "raise the level of technical expertise in DOE substantially," end of quote. Has the board issued formal recommendations to DOE that this be done? And if they have, what have been the results? Thank you, sir, for allowing me this opportunity to ask questions.
And, Mr. Crawford, if you would, offer those comments on paper. We will include those in the...
Every member, you and every member of the board have is an envelope with these questions, and I have a few extra copies that I'll hand out.
Well, thank you, sir.
And moreover, anyone that writes me or gives me their name, I will mail them a copy of these questions, okay?
Thank you, sir, for your continued service to the republic.
Thank you again for this opportunity, Mr. Chairman.
I'll turn the proceedings back over to our acting general counsel, Mr. Gilman.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. I will confirm that I received his written comments. So the next, and thank you again for your statement, sir. The next speaker is Ms. Kathy Crandall Robinson of Tri Valley Cares and the Alliance for Nuclear Accountability.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to participate in this hearing and to provide comments today. My name is Kathy Crandall Robinson, and I am speaking for the Alliance for Nuclear Accountability and Tri Valley Communities Against a Radioactive Environment. A N A is a network of more than thirty organizations located near DOE and NNSA defense nuclear facilities, including Tri Valley Cares, which is near Lawrence Livermore Laboratory. And for over thirty years, A N A leaders have addressed nuclear weapons production and waste cleanup issues across the weapons complex, and have developed really extensive experience working with DOE, NNSA, and the Safety Board. We are deeply concerned that Order one-forty-point-one constrains crucial oversight activities of the DNFSB, and thereby endangers public and worker health and safety. Since its establishment, the Safety Board has played a vital role in protecting public health and safety. It has identified numerous hazards, like buildup of explosive and flammable gases at Hanford Waste Tanks, fire hazards at WIP, seismic dangers at Los Alamos, bulging and mislabeled waste storage drums at Oak Ridge, and many more. Advice from the Safety Board has led to changes in safety design for facilities and corrective actions, and safety culture improvements at sites across the complex. Stakeholders and community leaders have very high praise for the information that they learn about the sites from regular site reports provided by the DNFSB. A particularly egregious problem that we find with Order one-forty-one is that it redefines and limits the role of DNFSB in protecting worker safety and health. This is an area where the Safety Board has played a crucial role. And a particular illustrative story about this was in a recent Santa Fe New Mexican story entitled "Exposed: The Life and Death of Chad Wald." This news article details Mr. Wald's journey working in high-radiation areas at Los Alamos National Labs from fall of nineteen ninety-nine to fall of two thousand and fourteen, and cites DNFSB reports as evidence of exposures. Wald received high doses, was scrubbed down on more than one occasion, and was told to stay home at various periods of time. In two thousand and fourteen, he was diagnosed with stage-four glioblastoma, a rare brain cancer. When he applied for medical care and compensation, the exposure records were gone, but notably, the DNFSB reports remained. Unfortunately, in early two thousand and seventeen, Mr. Wald died at the age of forty-four. We do recall also that in the decades before DNFSB existed, major accidents, spills, and releases were considered routine and justified in the service of a mentality of production first and safety second at best. And I'll note, because Rocky Flats was mentioned, in the days before DNFSB, Rocky Flats was one scary place, I know, because I grew up in Boulder. Order one-forty-point-one, with its degradation of DNFSB's role and authority, threatens to send us on a glide path back to a careless era, as if this were a time when safety concerns and dangers at the nuclear weapons facilities are shrinking. They are not. Instead, there are aging facilities, facilities operating where serious safety concerns have been raised, and some facilities where increased production plans could lead to novel dangers. For example, the plans with plutonium pit production that call for eighty pits per year by two thousand and thirty, expansion at Los Alamos, and also new facility at Savannah River Site. We heartily agree with the board's communication to Congress that the secretary's order wrongly attempts to diminish the authority granted by Congress for the board. We share the major concerns the Safety Board has very carefully explained, and I wanted to highlight three specific problem areas. The first is this notion of DNFSB's role of protecting public health applying only outside of the site boundaries. And related to this really is the exemption of hazard category three and facilities below this hazard level, as well as the sort of dismissal of the DNFSB role in worker health and safety. Many of the risky facilities now under DNFSB's purview, which we've discussed today, fall into this hazard category three or below. These facilities can and do change hazard classification. DOE claimed in a PowerPoint presentation, rolling out the implementation of this order, that by definition, hazard category-three nuclear facilities have the potential for only significant localized risks, as opposed to risks to the public, and are therefore exempted by the order. At Livermore Labs, in particular, this is a flawed argument. The public is so closely located to many of the facilities that they're closer than so-called co-located workers on the site, even though they're outside of the boundaries. Even at other sites where there is more physical separation, significant localized risks should definitely be overseen by the Safety Board. Negligence with dangerous materials results in releases in the air and water that travels beyond boundaries. Contamination can be carried home by workers who live in our communities. Curtailing DNFSB oversight of worker health and safety is dangerous and a tragic mistake. Worker safety is what assures public safety; they cannot be delinked. We're concerned also about the access to contractors and site workers. The constraints set forth in the order seem to set up some new procedures that could be cumbersome, counterproductive, confusing, timeliness issues, as Mr. Santos brought up. And we believe that this is at odds with the enabling legislation that actually directs that each contractor should fully cooperate with the board. Lastly, the ability to deny access to pre-decisional documents and deliberative meetings is concerning. In general, the DNFSB's expertise and safety perspective will be most helpful in developing orders, procedures, and requirements that help to address safety concerns at the earliest stage. The board does not have the regulatory authority to sanction or stop a decision. Instead, its value is really in providing sound information and advice. That advice is most useful at the deliberative and pre-decisional phase. This is especially true with access to early construction design. It is less helpful and more expensive for safety design flaws to be discovered at later stages. We always recall the UPF Design Fit fiasco. Taken together, the order constrains the flow and access to information. These constraints will likely have a chilling effect over time on DNFSB site representatives and inspectors and the information they seek, as well as the workers and contractors and the information they willingly provide. Information flowing to the public and stakeholders at the sites, we're also very concerned.
Ninety seconds.
Ninety? Okay. The goal of preventing safety incidents at the earliest stages is thwarted by what really seemed to be adversarial bureaucratic hurdles. We are especially worried that there was so little iterative and collaborative discussion in developing this order with the Safety Board, with stakeholders, workers, and contractors on the sites, and apparently very little discussion with Congress. On August twenty-seventh, A N A sent a letter calling upon DOE to rescind the order, or to at least hold it in abeyance, while public hearings at each site subject to DNFSB oversight could be held. It's three months later, we have not received a response from the Energy Secretary to our letter either. On November twenty-seventh, just yesterday, we sent...
Thirty seconds remaining.
...a letter to the Senate and House Armed Services Committee requesting the annulment of DOE Order one-forty-point-one. We want to really thank the DNFSB and the efforts that you've made at these hearings, and the letters, the red-line strikeout effort, all of that. We would like to ask, in addition to the hearings you have planned, one additional hearing in Washington State to be focused on cleanup issues at Hanford. And we call on the DNFSB to continue to exercise the full extent of your authority in imposing the constraints that limit access to facilities, people, and information that are at the heart of this order. Our members, including site workers and our communities, depend every day on DNFSB diligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. Connery has a question?
So I just want to thank you, Ms. Crandall Robinson, for your cogent and thoughtful remarks. And it's good to know that you've contacted both DOE and the Hill about the concerns of your organizations. And I guess, I just, a quick question. I often interact with the Tri Valley Cares and the Hanford, the HAB, the Hanford Advisory Board, when I go out to site. I'm just wondering, can you describe a little bit about the interactions that you have onsite with the Department of Energy and the contractors to get some of your concerns across? I mean, other than writing a letter, do you guys, do you have any mechanisms for having interaction?
Well, there is a lot of interaction at the individual sites. I know really good relationships with, we don't have, there's not a representative at Livermore, but there is a very fine, cognizant engineer, good relationships there. And, you know, I think also good relationships with the site-specific advisory boards at each of the sites. And the reason that the Alliance for Nuclear Accountability was formed right around the same time as CNFSB was that we were seeing many similar issues come up at each of the sites, and so formed this network to work together. And as that has happened over the years, we have interacted a great deal with DNFSB from across the sites.
Thank you.
All right. The next speaker is Robin Mills from Peace Farm of Carson City, Texas.
It's actually Carson County, Texas. Thank you. Robert B. Mills, the fourth. Thank you for noticing that I am the great-great-grandson of the builder of the Washington Monument. I grew up in Cincinnati, Ohio. I joined the Navy and graduated from Navy Nuclear Power School.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Captain Crawford. I served honorably in the Navy, and when I got out, I spent some time focusing on Fernald. And that was early nineteen eighty-four. I spent several years of my life trying to find out exactly how much waste and crime had been committed in Fernald from approximately nineteen fifty-one through the mid-eighties. And eventually, we were able to get John Glenn involved, primarily Lisa Crawford. Thank you, Lisa, and her organization, Fernald Residence for Environmental Safety and Health. Once John Glenn got involved, he couldn't get through either. He was being lied to. Now, I notice that our DOE people have left. They don't want to hear this, but it was outrageous. People were being murdered by our government through incompetence. And that's what John Glenn saw and why he started the legislation, which resulted in DNFSB in nineteen eighty-eight. So you might say that I was the butterfly that resulted in your organization being kind of amusing. The plants are getting older, the materials are getting stressed, workers are older and they're getting lackadaisical about what they're doing. Safety is expensive, safety is slower, safety is frustrating. But I just finished reading a very long exposé on what happened at Fukushima by Bill Vollman called "No Immediate Danger," and the result of not being saved are pretty severe. It's outrageous, the bags and the radiation that they've had to deal with. Essentially, a small mistake resulted in a huge disaster costing trillions of dollars. The public has a right to know that things are being done safely. And I do appreciate DNFSB and your efforts. I noticed back in two thousand and fifteen, you had a nice report on PANTEX, where you made specific recommendations on the physical site safety. And we, at the Peace Farm, have been saying the same thing for many years. I was living back there in the nineties, and I was saying the same thing. Thank you very much. So DNFSB has made some great moves, but now, as far as we can tell, this Order one-forty-point-one is an attempt to castrate the efforts of DNFSB and make it so that if anything embarrassing to the government comes out, it can be squashed. That's the way we see it at the Peace Farm. The Peace Farm is one of the member groups of A N A. I want to say that I want to be emotional here, because too many people have been analytical about it. And I think that the public deserves someone to say, "No!" Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Megan Casper of Energy Communities Alliance.
Chairman Hamilton, members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to provide comment here today on behalf of the Energy Communities Alliance. My name is Megan Casper. I serve as the program manager for the Energy Communities Alliance, or ECA. ECA is the organization of local communities adjacent to or hosting U.S. Department of Energy and National Nuclear Security Administration facilities. Our communities are those that will be directly impacted by how policies such as Order one-forty-point-one are implemented. Since the DNFSB hearing on August twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, ECA has met with DOE officials to share our concerns and to better understand DOE's reasoning for the new order. It was beneficial to speak with DOE directly and explain that while we agree with many of DOE's goals, such as including the need to improve operations, safety, and decrease costs, the order needs clarification. We noted to DOE that in its current iteration, the order could negatively impact DNFSB's efforts to provide independent oversight, a critical function of the board. We also identified that our primary concerns are ensuring the safety of workers and communities at the sites. After our meetings with DOE, we concluded that with some... After our meetings with DOE, we concluded that with some modification to the order, ECA could in fact support implementing changes moving forward. We ask that DNFSB identify specific suggested language changes to the order and meet with DOE on the proposal to try and resolve differences. We found it entirely encouraging, in Mr. Santos' remarks today, that the Board has created and reviewed a red line of this order. We recommend that the DNFSB share this red line with DOE and with relevant stakeholders. We think this will help to clear up confusion and reconcile misaligned interpretations of the order. We also think it will ensure that the order language codifies the intent of DOE and not something else. Primary clarifications that ECA would like to see included, or excuse me, that we would like to see include but are not limited to were, one, access. DOE and NNSA staff seem to testify at the last hearing that the DNFSB would have access, if requested, to hazard Category 3 or below sites, but the order appears to restrict this access. We understand that there are some reasonable terms that each party, meaning DOE and DNFSB, could agree to that in no way impacts the statutory authority of the DNFSB. Number two, oversight onsite. The language attempting to define, quote, "public health and safety" as only the health and safety of individuals located beyond the site is unclear. The language should be stated in a way that does not give the impression that the DNFSB should not have any oversight of onsite activities, particularly since all problems that have ever occurred offsite are caused by onsite activities. Number three, restrictions on access to information. Restrictions on pre-decisional and other similar information doesn't quite make sense in the eyes of ECA is unclear and too restrictive, since many DOE and NNSA decisions can be delayed for years. For example, would DNFSB only have access to information after a record of decision or other similar action be signed? Then, at that point, it may be too late for input on an issue that impacts human health and safety now. Based on our discussions with DOE, DOE's intent seems to be to ensure that DNFSB is reviewing DOE's decisions and not its analysis of options that may never be pursued, but ECA's position is that needs to be clear in the order itself. ECA maintains that the independent oversight of the DNFSB, excuse me, the independent oversight role that DNFSB fills is necessary for the safety of communities and its workers. In addition, DNFSB should also review its own operations. ECA has made recommendations to DNFSB in the past in this regard, and these include, one, DNFSB should work together with DOE to ensure open communications and jointly develop solutions to its problems identified in its reports. Two, DNFSB should prioritize communications with the communities most directly impacted by the report and decisions in order to ensure that there are opportunities for meaningfully and timely, meaningful and timely input before recommendations are made. Three, DNFSB should include a cost-benefit and risk-reduction analysis to ensure that they take into account budgets and feasibility while developing any recommendations. And finally, DNFSB staff and members should heed its independent oversight role and recuse themselves if any possibility of bias or opposition to a project exists. In closing, ECA urges DOE work cooperatively with the DNFSB and public stakeholders to ensure that the language of the new order aligns with the department's actual goals to increase the efficiency and safety of its interactions and the health and safety of workers and communities supporting the nuclear weapons complex. We prepared formal comments that we will supply to you and ask that it be submitted and shown to the record for today's hearing. With that, I thank you.
So, oh, ma'am, before you sit down? Oh, can we just ask a few questions? Sorry. So I appreciate ECA's interest in the order, and the fact that you've had conversations with DOE is helpful. We haven't actually had a sit-down communication with you at all. We've only received comments in this, in this way. You talked about the need for DOE and the Defense Board to work together to solve problems, and yet, your recommendation is that we start with their order and then modify their order to make sure it meets their intent. So I guess my question for you is, you know, as, as Defense Board, I would have thought that the solution set would be for DOE and for the Defense Board to sit down and perhaps come together with, for memorandum of understanding, rather than try to rewrite an order that's problematic at its base. I just wanted to know if you have any reaction to that.
Sure. I think there's definitely a question of what should have been done, but that's not one that I think ECA or its members, in discussion of this order, in discussion of how we are to respond to it, that's not really what we've talked about. Instead, it's more discussion of what needs to be done now. So rather than dealing in hypothetical what-ifs, what could have been done, what should have been done, what can be done now, is the question we're hoping to address. And at the point where DOE has ordered already, as of, I think it was May this year, implemented this order, Order 140.1, how can we, moving forward, ensure that it is amended or adapted to incorporate stakeholder interests and to, excuse me, to incorporate the concerns that the DNFSB has? So I appreciate the point you're making, but I think that's not the way that ECA has been approaching it.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
The final speaker is Lydia Dennett of the Project on Government Oversight.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment today. My name is Lydia Dennett. I'm an investigator with the Project on Government Oversight, or POGO. POGO is a nonpartisan, independent watchdog that investigates and exposes government waste, corruption, and abuse of power. We work to support the independence of oversight agencies and amplify their findings to achieve a more open and accountable federal government. The Defense Nuclear Facilities Safety Board is one such organization, and POGO is concerned that this DOE Order 140.1 significantly and improperly undermines the Board's access to defense nuclear facilities and personnel, and restricts its ability to perform meaningful oversight of the matters that most affect public health and safety. We know that DOE prides itself on ensuring its defense nuclear sites maintain the highest levels of safety and security standards. And this order appears to be intended to underscore the department's commitment to this and its responsibility to manage risks and hold management accountable. But POGO is concerned that it may instead unduly restrict the Board's ability to thoroughly review and assess potentially catastrophic safety issues. POGO is particularly concerned about the order's requirements for how department contractors should respond to requests for information from the Board. The DOE outsources the operation and management of its defense nuclear facilities to a select group of contractors and contractor consortia, and the vast majority of workers at these sites are contract employees. In order to get the most accurate and timely information, the Board needs to be able to work directly with the contractors managing the facilities. Under this order, these contractors would be required to refer all requests for information to a departmental site liaison to determine an appropriate response, and only after a response from the site liaison would they be able to officially respond to the Board. This seems like an unnecessary and impractical bureaucratic hurdle, especially since government employees at these sites are often already overburdened with other contract management issues. POGO is further concerned about the role contractor organizations may have played in the formulation of this order. At the August hearing earlier this year, DNFSB Board members referenced a 2017 memo from numerous DOE contractors requesting an evaluation of the department's manual for working with the Board for revision and conversion into an order, indicating this process may have been undertaken partially at the request of the contractors. In response to your questioning, DOE confirmed that the team in charge of crafting the order did not formally incorporate any input from worker unions, the public, or even the Board itself. We've seen that contractors have long complained that the department's oversight practices are overly burdensome, and requests for information and data can be time-consuming and may not always result in recommendations that support the contractors' interests. This change in policy makes it easier for contractors to hide any details or information that they may not want to come to light. But we feel strongly that DOE's obligations are to the public, and the interests of its contractors should only be considered with an eye toward what is in the best interest of taxpayers. Time and time and time, time and time again, government oversight groups, including POGO, have found that the department has been unwilling or unable to hold its contractors accountable. Congress created the Board to provide additional accountability and review for issues that may affect the safety of the communities around and within these sites. As the department embarks on a trillion-dollar, 30-year plan to modernize the nuclear weapons stockpile, it should not be contrailing any kind of safety oversight. I would further like to echo the other comments that have been made today regarding some of the other issues, in particular, the narrowing the definition of public safety, to exclude worker safety. The department has not yet provided a compelling reason for so dramatically reducing the scope of the Board's jurisdiction, but the Board's track record shows that how important its work is for addressing these issues in particular. Its recommendations have led to several major worker safety improvements across the complex, but without an official, formal recommendation, the department, the Board, and the public cannot track these concerns or hold facilities accountable if they fail to address risks to worker health and safety. So the Board, we feel that the department should welcome the Board's involvement and participation in developing an interface guidance that facilitates oversight rather than restricting it. We strongly encourage DOE to revise this order or put together a memorandum of understanding and work with the Board so that they can continue to issue robust and meaningful safety recommendations. Thank you.
That's the final speaker on our list.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to briefly make a small correction to your comments. The Department of Energy did, in fact, reach out to us prior to the issuance of this order to get an input. In the first hearing, I gave the specifics on that. I don't have the dates with me, but affect, you can go back and look at the first hearing to get the details. The administrator of the NNSA offered me and the Board a very short period of time to give very high-level comments via just an email, but there was no, you are correct, there was no formal review by the Board or its staff, but there was this very quick informal opportunity for us to express our concerns prior to the orders being signed out. So just a little bit of a nuance on that, just for clarification for everybody. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Gilman.
Yes, so, that is, okay. Yes, thank you for clarifying, you know, it was informal, it was, it was to the chairman, not to the Board members, and what I saw, some feedback provided, my understanding is none of that actually made it to the order, nor there was no reply to such feedback. I just want to tell the full story there. Thank you.
So that was the last speaker on our list. Now we'll take anyone else who is interested, and we have some right now. My apologies.
... I wasn't going to say anything, but I thought I might not get another chance. But anyway, my name's Herbert Massey. I have 47 years of nuclear experience, 21 commercial, 24 I worked on the Board's staff, and I have lots of comments in the past. My feeling is probably in between the two things I've heard here, so I'll probably get both sides upsetting me, which means I'm probably approaching truth. What I, what I, well, first of all, I would say the access question should be resolved in the sense that the resident inspectors should have full access. Whatever the NRC does, I think the Defense Board ought to have. So I think that that shouldn't be, that should be taken off the table. One of the things I think that would help, and I agree with what Mr. Crawford said, I learned a lot from him about line managers being responsible. The Board issued a recommendation 933 to improve the technical capability of the DOE people, and that was 25 years ago. And so the question is, where's that, where's that at? There are good people in DOE. I've seen some, depends on where you look and stuff, and what level. And I've seen some people, I've seen a lot of good people, but, you know, there are holes here and there. And I recall Mr. Crawford one time, he said his goal would be looking down someday, seeing some of the staffers dispersed out in the DOE, and I think some of that's happened with Matt Maury and Ike and so forth. I remember those words were said in probably 1992, I think. One of the things I think has to be done with the order is, where I have a problem is the focus on what facilities y'all look at. Let me just give you my quick thoughts on that. The facility should be ranked, I think, and tied into the order. This is my ranking. Let me just read this, and I'll submit this for the record, I have to go back home and write this up, but nuclear weapons facilities, of course, the high-level waste facilities, I know ECA, I went to ECA meeting a year ago on that, they did a good job on that. That's really highly important that no one messes around with those. Then you got petroleum facilities, a high priority, and then it goes down, I'd say tritium, true waste is lesser, uranium is less than that, I think, because the doses are lower. Don't call me pharmacy. Then you got low-level waste facilities, like WHOOP, and then you got decommissioning activities, which are some, unless you're decommissioning a high-material facility, those are actually lower priorities. And I still remember Mr. Crawford said that in 1991 or '92 at a meeting, that decommissioning was easy and low-tech. So I have a history on all that stuff. So I think if you ordered things and looked at risks and consequences, and how far the Board has to go into some of these things, you'd have more credibility relative to DOE. I think that's really one of the issues that they're fighting. Joe DiNino says something that's profound to me, and my first supervisor at Westhouse said the same thing. We're not working on safety for safety's sake, we want safe operations. You want the plants to operate, but you want them to do safely. Now, I also strongly believe that most people, there may be exceptions, most people generally want to work in a safe environment. You know, we sometimes forget that. No one wants to jeopardize and go home and cause a problem to their family. One good model for this was, I think I worked on Rocky Flats closure project, and there was an interface agreement that would have worked on other projects, I think. They had a split between the DOE scope, Defense Board oversight, and like the EPA scope and the state scope. Some of the stuff could be done by other entities. Defense Board didn't have to do everything. They worked on the high-risk stuff, and then they cut it off, and it still got done. Everything got done safely at Rocky Flats. That site is now gone, essentially. So that's an example. So the order, when I first read the order, I skimmed it a couple of months ago, but I read it on the train coming down. There's some overreach in it, and I think the truth, I think it needs to be negotiation. I think that the order probably goes too far, but I think what we did before was too far on our side. I think the truth is maybe somewhere in between. And I heard some good comments, like cost-benefit is important. You know, you don't want to spend a billion dollars on something that's trivial. And I remember Vic Stella one time, when we were starting on Rocky Flats, I won't tell you, one of the group leads said, "You mean you want to spend $2 billion on Pennington Sarfik Hay Reactor?" And the guy backed off, said, "No, no, I didn't mean that." You know, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. So in summary, site reps ought to have full access, whatever NRC does, and then I think there needs to be negotiation on the order. I think the truth is somewhere in between. Those are my comments.
Thank you, sir. I would just take this time to ask if there is anyone else who would like to make a comment? Sir?
My name is Jack Crawford. I'm the son of Captain Crawford, and me being up here is the ultimate irony, because when I, when Dad asked me to bring him down, I can tell you, I never in my life would have thought I'd be up here addressing you. First of all, let me say, I know the very fact that you have these, these meetings testifies to how seriously you take the whole issue of nuclear safety. I know that from listening to my father, I know it from his stories of years and years and years being in the Navy. I'm sorry, what's your name, sir?
Adam.
Okay. This gentleman here, being in the Navy, and I know from, from his stories that this gentleman's absolutely right. Getting through nuclear reactor school is incredibly difficult. I could have never gotten through it myself, but I know from my dad and from talking to people who've gotten through it, that the Navy's never had a nuclear accident. They've lost two submarines. In neither case was either one of them, the sinking of either one, due to a nuclear accident. It's because their, their standards are so rigorous that they've never had an accident. And I know that the Board, in part, is kind of coming out of that tradition. I kind of feel like, you know, watching this, I sort of feel like, I spent my whole life as a coach and a teacher, okay? I'm not in any way, shape, or form qualified to speak on technical or scientific issues, but I sort of feel like I'm watching something that reminded me of the NFL situation. These are the players, you guys are the union reps, okay? People bring to you issues of concerns about concussions and injuries, and the NFL owners and the commission- owners and the commissioners, they leave. They leave when the players, you know, are trying to present issues of safety to the people that should be hearing it. I can't for the life of me understand why. One, two, three, four, five, six, people get up here, talk to the people who take these issues seriously, and when they're hearing, when they should be hearing from the public, they leave. I'm sure they had very good reasons for leaving, which means I have no idea why they left, okay? It's a diplomatic way of saying that, okay? But I'm sure they had reasons for leaving, but I can't understand why they're not here, listening to people who's, who's, who are living in situations where they're impacted in a very real way when it comes to lack of safety measures in nuclear facilities. So, again, not trying to in any way, you know, criticize you for your efforts, I know you're in a situation where you have to, you have to do what you think is best for the public, and I know you do, but the people who should be hearing it as much as anybody aren't here, and I, I just don't know why. I just find that very hard to believe. That's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Chairman?
You know, we're going to have the proudest founder on the planet.
Just for the record, Mr. Crawford Jr., there are DOE executives here, I'm not going to identify them, but they're, they're also monitoring this, so get your point, but I just wanted to modify it a little bit, make sure you're clear.
Is there any other members of the public that would like to make a statement? Hearing no response, I thank each of our public commenters for speaking, and at this time, I'll turn the proceedings back over to Mr. Hamilton for closing remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Gilman. I will now turn to my fellow board members for their closing remarks, if any. Board Member Santos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you again to the Department of Energy, its official witnesses today, and all the participants in today's hearing. Again, I want to thank our DNFSB staff and all the support personnel that made today's hearing possible, as well as my fellow board members. Ensuring public health and safety, that's, that's what it's all about, and I take that very seriously. So, our independent nuclear safety oversight mission continues to be extremely important, even after the 30-year history of, of the board, especially when one studies the challenges that are currently facing the defense nuclear complex. The issuance and implementation of Order 140.1 is creating external pressures to this agency with the potential to undermine the effectiveness of the Defense Nuclear Facility Safety Board in ensuring adequate protection of public health and safety. The message we, we continually receive from the department is, there's no change. So, I ask myself, so why issue this order? I just can't reconcile the language of the order with the theme of, there's no change. So, I am concerned that things will change as people implement this order. I hope I'm proving wrong, and I do remain optimistic that we will be able to find a way to truly collaborate with the leadership of the department, to truly have a dialogue, to revise the order, to improve the interface between the two agencies, or whatever other solution is out there. This is too important. However, I need to recognize that it's equally important that the, that we, the DNFSB, address our internal issues that are also creating pressures and undermining our performance and effectiveness in ensuring adequate protection of public health and safety. These internal issues continue to be documented in several recent studies, there's some press coverage, like Ms. Connery mentioned, such as inspector general reports and a study conducted by the National Academy of Public Administration. That is why I support and look forward to the upcoming public business meeting on December 20th, 2019, so we as a board can address the internal issues with the same enthusiasm and collaboration that we are using to address the external issues presented by Order 140.1. I continue to express to my fellow board members that I believe the board should be equally transparent and timely during the December 20th upcoming meeting, and that is why I continue to encourage that we have a forum similar to this one today, where we are live-streaming the, the meeting, and we provide the public with an opportunity to provide comments. So, this concludes my statement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Board Member Connery.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, fellow board members, and I want to thank the public for coming today and for participating. I don't have prepared remarks, so I'm going to ad lib, which is always a scary thing for everybody involved, but I, I do, you know, want to associate myself with some of the, the comments we've heard from the public. I, I think Mr. Massey's right, you know, there's three sides to every story, his side, her side, and the truth, and what the truth is, I think, is, is probably in between, but, but we have, what we have to look at are the words on the page, and again, I have full confidence that the Honorable Assistant Secretary White and her counterpart in NNSA are going to do the best things that they can do for both public health and safety and to be good stewards of the, of the public coffers. That being said, we don't know what's going to happen down the road, and those words on a page will have effects in decision-makers that will come after, and they, they actually already have effect even on the board and the board staff as, as we start to look at all of our comments and decisions and say, how does this fit within the order? So, we may be eroding safety accidentally, just because we've looked at the order and the words on the page, and we're now trying to retrofit everything we do into the words that were created by one party to a collaborative effort, and I think that's, I think that's problematic, and I think we have to worry about it. I, I do understand that we need to prioritize, we are a staff of fewer than 100 in a complex that is, you know, tens of thousands, and so we can't look at everything, we have to look at, at high-risk activities, but we also have to look at low and medium-risk activities as well, because how the department conducts itself in those activities and how the contractors conduct themselves are less suggestive of how they're going to conduct themselves in high-risk activities. And so, I, I've always used analogy of, you know, we're like sticking a toothpick in a cake while you're baking it to see what's sticky when you pull the toothpick out. In some cases, it's going to come out clean, and that's great, in some cases, it's not, and it, it could describe a trend that we're going to see in, in other parts of the complex that could have high consequences for public health and safety. And I do believe that we have a responsibility to understand the risks to the workers and the co-located workers. Yes, they are highly trained, they know the hazards of the facility, if they're in that defense nuclear facility, but they could be within the site boundaries and not have exquisite knowledge of the hazards of the facility that's co-located with them. They could be the delivery person providing consumables to one of the buildings, they could be folks on, on the ground who are training, who don't have understanding of those hazards, and they're going to be impacted, and it's not going to be a good day for anybody in the department or anybody in the Defense Nuclear Facility Safety Board and, and the public in general. So, I think we have to take those things into consideration, and again, we look forward to interactions with the public. You are our stakeholders as well. Our responsibility is to, not only the mission of our agency is, is to oversee DOE, but it's also to provide you with the confidence that the department is doing its job, and therefore the department should have a vested interest in making sure that we can do our job well and that we can project that confidence to the public, because again, everybody comes in to their job expecting safety, and nobody comes in thinking that I'm going to screw up safety today, but it does happen, and I think we have to be cognizant and cautious in that area. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Connery. Board Member Roberson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't plan on making a closing statement, but I do have to tell you, I so appreciate all the comments from the public. I mean, you're articulate, and I, I think it always helps put things in perspective. This is, there's no grandstanding, it's not about a power struggle between DOE and the board, it really should be focused on something Mr. Crawford Jr. said. He said, "I'm a teacher and a coach, I don't know anything about this." Well, you're your dad's son, you know more than you think. However, the reason we do this is so you can do what you do and feel confident that the parties involved in ensuring safe, safety is occurring, where the operations are occurring are working, and I want to thank every speaker, and thank you not just for your time, but for your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberson. I have one personal comment before we close. I'm left with the same sense that I had after the first hearing. I like what I hear from the Department of Energy on this order, I, I don't like what I read in the order. Thank you. This concludes my personal closing remarks. I would now like to again thank the witnesses and the organizations and speakers today for supporting this hearing. I also want to thank all those who attended, either in person or via the Internet. Our goal for this hearing was to gather information on the department's environment, environmental management interface with the Defense Nuclear Facilities Safety Board, the board's access to facilities, information and personnel, and the potential impacts to the board's resident inspector program. This was the second in a series of up to three hearings regarding DOE Order 140.1. The next hearing will be in New Mexico in February of 2018, specific date yet to be deter, determined.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Santos. February 2019, the specific date is yet to be determined. This morning, we've heard testimony from the Assistant Secretary for the Office of Environmental Management and the manager of the Oak Ridge Office of Environmental Management, as well as public comment, and so thank you again for making those comments, we do appreciate it. The board will consider the information gathered this morning to inform any actions that we may take regarding these issues. Once again, I thank everyone for participation at the hearing. The record of this proceeding will remain open until December 28, 2018. This concludes the public hearing of the Defense Nuclear Facilities Safety Board. We are adjourned.